Welcome to the Monday, May 12th meeting of the Falls Church City Council. I wanted to call this meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Ms. Conley.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Ms. Flynn.
Here.
Ms. Sean Siskat.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Ms. Underhill.
Here.
And Mayor Hardy.
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Great. We can ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Legions, please. Pledge of Legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
I move to adopt tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any concessions or noes? Meeting's agenda is adopted. We have a number of special proclamations that kick us off tonight. We've got five, in fact. So we're going to start with the first, which is a proclamation declaring May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Falls Church. And Ms. Underhill will do the honors.
Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month was first observed in May of 2006 by a presidential proclamation in recognition of the 350-plus years of Jewish history in America that began with the 1654 arrival of Jewish refugees at the port of modern-day New York City. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month encourages the community to raise awareness and understanding of Jewish American history, heritage, and culture, both past and present. And whereas during this month, communities across the United States will celebrate the contributions of Jewish Americans, a diverse group of people representing many races, ethnicities, and Jewish movements. And whereas Jewish Americans have contributed significantly to cultural, social, and political fields, helping shape American sports, entertainment, arts, medicine, cuisine, science, government, and business. And whereas the city wishes to honor the impact Jewish Americans have had on our country through their advocacy for religious and cultural freedom for themselves and others. And whereas the city also wishes to honor the many contributions that Jewish Americans have made and continue to make in our community.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the city of Falls Church, and call on all of our community members to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Yes, and Renee Andrews would like to say a few words.
Terrific. Welcome us, Andrews.
Thank you. Renee Andrews, 105 Founders Avenue. I just briefly want to say, Mayor Hardy, City Council, and Cindy Mester, thank you for inviting me, and thank you for this recognition. It's especially in this day of age, especially in this day of age when there is antisemitism in some places, it is wonderful to be in our welcoming city. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Would you like to come up and help receive the proclamation? And please invite others who would like to join us. Brittany? Brittany, do you all want to? Okay, next up, we have a proclamation declaring May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Vice Mayor Sean Siskat will do the honors.
Thank you for the honor. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders make up an important part of the city, bringing valuable cultural experiences, ideas, and practices that enrich and strengthen the fabric of our community. And whereas the city of Falls Church is proud to be home to people of many cultures and countries that Asian American and Pacific Islander populations have ties to, including China, India, Japan, Laos, Pakistan, the Philippines, South Korea, Thailand, and Vietnam, among many other nations. And whereas the varying experiences of Asian Americans remind us of the opportunities and resources the city has to offer, as well as the issues we can improve on, from first-generation immigrants and asylum seekers who have worked to create a home in a new land, to established generations that seek to improve the quality of life and advocate for a better community. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander community members are some of the most active advocates of cultural preservation in the city, with Asian American community members leading the charge to support and maintain important local businesses, community spaces, and cultural touchstones in the region. And whereas businesses and organizations led by Asian community members line the heart of the city's downtown and comprise the Eden Center, one of the region's most popular commercial centers, drawing visitors to the city from across state and country borders. And whereas many of the contributions of the Asian community in Falls Church reflect the values the city holds, including resiliency and creativity seen in flourishing businesses, regional distinction demonstrated by popular annual events, and small-town character stemming from strong connections and a welcoming environment. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebrates the culture, history, and contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Falls Church, and call upon all to recognize the many contributions and achievements of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans, and to support and visit the abundant variety of Asian-owned businesses and restaurants in the community. Do we have anyone in the audience who's coming to accept the proclamation? Sounds like...
You should accept it.
Okay, we're happy to take a picture anyway, because that's what... And while we've got everyone's attention, in celebration of AIPM month in May, I think the Eden Center is actually unveiling a new mural in the community this Friday at 2:00, and everyone's invited to see it, so... Third up is a proclamation declaring May 18th to 24th as 2025 as Public Works Week in Falls Church, and Ms. Flynn will do the honors.
Whereas the staff of the Department of Public Works manage infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to a sustainable community and to the high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Falls Church. And whereas the city's infrastructure could not function without the sustained efforts of DPW professionals who are collectively responsible for our city's transportation system, public buildings, solid waste and recycling collections, and sanitary sewer and stormwater systems. And whereas these dynamic services are dependent upon DPW employees whose vision is working together to sustain and enhance our community's infrastructure and provide a safe, green, and clean environment. And whereas 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas this year's theme for National Public Works Week is "People, Purpose, Presence", and highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day. And whereas the public is invited to acknowledge the quiet dedication and achievements of the city's Department of Public Works.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025, as Public Works Week in the city of Falls Church, and urge citizens to join in recognizing the substantial contributions with the city's public work staff makes in maintaining our quality of life. And I see our new Public Works Director, Amanda Stoutbrain, and other members of Public Works here. Thank you for joining us. You really are our unsung heroes across the city, so thank you for making life so great Welcome to your first council meeting.
Thank you so much. A good one to be had. Thank you.
Did we start off gently?
Great.
With awards and... Okay.
And on three, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you all for being here.
And Amanda, I don't... Was anyone going to speak to the open house, just to invite everybody to the open house on Wednesday next week? 21st?
Yes, on Wednesday, May 21st, in the afternoon from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., is a public open house over at the Property Yard, aimed at children and families, but everyone is welcome. It was a big hit last year. I think there were, you know, things to play in the sand and touch a truck, but a lot more than that, and an opportunity to learn from our great DPW men and women who work for the team. So that's 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., the public is welcome on May 21st. Thank you again.
Great, thank you. Yeah, touch a truck was really popular with my kids, so hopefully there's no, like, age limit, we can still go as adults. Okay, fourth up, we have a proclamation declaring May 11th through 17th as Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Mr. Snyder will do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas last year, 147 federal, state, county, municipal, military, tribal, and campus officers died in the line of duty, a 25% increase over the previous year, with the leading cause of deaths for police officers being by gunfire, and the largest increase resulting from traffic-related incidents, both underscoring the growing risks faced by law enforcement officers. And whereas last year, there were three line-of-duty enforcement deaths in the Commonwealth of Virginia, Smith County Sheriff's Office Deputy Hunter Reedy shot and killed on August 9, 2024, during a traffic stop. Norfolk Police Detective Maurice Mo. Joseph died as a result of 9/11-related illnesses. And Charles City County Sheriff Sergeant Floyd Miles Jr., who died of a heart attack while struggling with a suspect. And whereas the community values the courage, devotion, and integrity with which law enforcement officers maintain peace and security. And the officers and deputies of the Falls Church Police Department and Sheriff's Office are meeting the daily challenge of protecting our city and our families with bravery and hard work. And whereas Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day are opportunities to honor officers and deputies who have died in the line of duty, and recognize the sacrifices made by the families of those officers, and the sacrifices made by families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 11th through 17th, 2025, as Police Week. And I further proclaim May 15th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Falls Church, and call these observances to the attention of all. It looks like we have members of our public safety staff here. Want to invite them to come up? Last but not least, we have a commendation tonight, recognizing John Moye Jr. for his service to the city of Falls Church and his career in law enforcement. And Ms. Downs will do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas in recognition of Police Officer John Moye Jr., who in April 1978 became the city's first black police officer. And whereas Officer John Moye Jr.'s groundbreaking service was with distinction, courage, and dedication, while paving the way for future generations. And whereas John Moye Jr. did much to bring the department into the computer age. And whereas he was voted Police Officer of the Year in 1989. And whereas John Moye Jr. served with the department as a patrolman, community services officer, and as an investigator. And whereas he served on the city's retirement board and the Accident Review Committee. And whereas he became a police sergeant in October 1994. And whereas after 21 years of service, Mr. Moye retired from the city of Falls Church's Police Department in September 1999.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, Mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, on behalf of the City Council of the city of Falls Church, do hereby honor, commend, and recognize John Moye Jr. for his outstanding service and legacy of positive change in the city of Falls Church, and recognize his groundbreaking role in successfully integrating the city of Falls Church's Police Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the city council members. Mr. Moye could not make it tonight, but I do want to just say he is watching live your YouTube channel. He sends you regrets for not being able to make it, he's not feeling well. I've had multiple conversations with him about his service, have found a lot of great articles going back to late '70s, '80s, and '90s. He was really involved with the community. Nashville Night Out in 1992, a whole lot of different community events. He was a very beloved member of this community. So while he's watching, I just wanted to thank him for his service to the community, and thank you for recognizing him with this commendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I think we are done for proclamations and special presentations tonight. Madam Clerk, do we have any oaths of office for new board and commission members in an audience?
We do. We have Elise Benkson for the Arts and Humanities Council. First up?
Great.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Arts and Humanities Council of Falls Church according to the best of your ability, so hope you die?
I will.
Thank you, and you are sworn in. And we also have Ariadne O'Toole for Arts and Humanities Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Arts and Humanities Council of Falls Church according to the best of your ability, so hope you die?
I will.
Thank you. And would you all like to have a photo with your council?
Is that it for oaths of office?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's move on to receive a public comment. Can you start with a summary of written comments before we take live comments?
I will, and this is the summary of written comments since your last regular meeting regarding the budget. Heather and Patrick Brady wrote in support of a 2.5-cent tax cut, along with budget cuts to the city government and school budgets. Heather Henry wrote in support of a real estate tax cut. Angie Jacobson, 120 South Cherry Street, wrote in opposition to a real estate tax rate increase to $1.21. Bob LaGeneste wrote in opposition to funding any additional contingency funds and requested that the city use more debt financing. Peter Seitz of 701 Randolph Street wrote in opposition to increasing the personal property tax. The Washington Area Bicycleists Association wrote in favor of funding bicycle, infrastructure, maintenance, and engineering and project management staff. Regarding the budget and schools, the following requested that the school budget request be fully funded. Jennifer Chen, Elizabeth Troy, 135 West Annandale Road, Brendan Devine, 116 North Fairfax Street, Jamie Eichelhart, 807 Villaridge Road, Josephine A. Lewis, Cara Nath, 407 Little Falls Street, Deborah Shushan, Alexandra and Kevin Tillman, 1205 B Lincoln Avenue, Austin Todd, Vishwaz, Bill Walton, Ph.D., Liz Weatherly, 305 Buxton Road. Regarding the solid waste collection fee, Gina Abruzzi asked for more discussion regarding the fee. On other topics, Sean Dakin, 410 South Maple Avenue, wrote regarding the lack of ADA parking in front of Mason's Lobster. Courtney and Phil Newbold of 212 South Lee Street wrote in opposition to a rezoning application for 106 to 108 South Lee Street. The planning commission forwarded a request for an increase to their compensation, and Peter Seitz of 701 Randolph Street complimented the police department for their May 2 response to fallen tree limbs on Madison Lane and Randolph Street.
Great, thank you for that summary. Let's move on to receive a public comment, either live in person or virtual?
Yes. First, we have Tom Yaz Garrity, followed by Robert LaGeneste.
Right there. Madam Mayor and council members, so I'm writing in opposition to the development at 106108 South Lee. In full disclosure, I'm directly impacted by this proposed development because my wife, four-year-old daughter, and I live directly across the street. But I would have opposed it regardless, because I don't think it's good for Falls Church City. Coupled with the rampant development happening elsewhere in our city, I'm worried this development will just add to the changing the face of our neighborhood, from a quiet place of single-family homes to a crowded, noisier, more expensive, more stressful place to live. I do see problems with congestion, parking, stormwater, sewer management. And on this last point, I spoke with the developer, and he said that he would leave it no worse but no better than it is now. And that's, it's not good now, and I think it'll likely get worse. And I know that there will be promises made by the developer to make sure everything is fine, but I'm not all that convinced that it will be. My child will soon attend public school, and I worry about the effect of this rampant development on our schools and the teacher-to-student ratio. We have some of the best schools in the country. U.S. News &amp; World Report says that. But this could be put at risk, not only with this development, but the other development that we see all around in North Lee and North Oak. I'm also concerned, to be frank, because I want the city council to give more priority, not to give so much priority to developers, and I see it as kind of over the interest in well-being of residents. Look, I'll be honest, I'm retiring in September after 34 years in the foreign service. I have served two years, two tours in Iraq, one in Baghdad, and one in Kirkuk, another tour in Kabul, Afghanistan. I've experienced many rocket attacks, have been involved in an IED attack, and I saved all this because my wife and I have put our life savings into buying our dream house a few years ago here in Falls Church City. Now I'm afraid it will not be the same. I also note that my own property is an eligible T1 zoning area, and I had no idea until I was told that by the developer. So my own property could contribute to what I see as this overdevelopment. So I ask that this proposed development at least be delayed until proper study is done to gauge its effects and implications. From what I gather, this has not been the case, at least not to the extent that I would like. I worry that we may see higher property taxes already, among the highest in Virginia, to deal with the effects of this overcrowding. I would close by saying, let's not be known henceforth as the crowded, overdeveloped little city. Let's keep it just the little city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert LaGeneste.
Good evening. I want to start with two compliments. First is the covered bike rack that's out front. I've used it on two occasions and look forward to a dry seat this evening. The second is for the mayor's weekly communication. Absent that, I'm not sure how I would stay apprised of the evolution of the budget. From what I understand of the budget, it again creates a false sense of scarcity, which is a bit ironic when many of us are starting to learn about abundance, and why we can't build that into our budgets is concerning. It also needlessly throws stakeholders into competition for resources, and it destroys economic activity in deference to Wall Street. The city has extremely conservative fiscal posture for years. We sold the water system, and we pre-funded the pensions. We built a high school, we built a library, we renovated this building that should last 100 years, and we did that mostly on short-term financing, with 2/3 of our debt having a duration of less... Why not a fourth or fifth? Where is the limit on this saving, I mean taxing and saving? Instead, what we should be doing is waiting for an actual budget shortfall, and then allow your professional finance manager, you have a finance manager in the finance department, they can go out and negotiate a line of credit or some other credit vehicle. That's what businesses and individuals have to do when there's an unanticipated shortfall. And so I just generally want to ask, why are we so afraid of debt and eager to celebrate paying off the middle-school bond, for example? We should be mourning that loss. When we kicked off this budget conversation, it was suggested we should celebrate paying off the MEH bond. But that was probably a very low-interest-rate bond. So as one of the individuals who is facing severance from the federal government and possibly losing my job, the worst thing you could do now is tax me and save that money. The second worst thing you can do is tax me and spend it. The best thing you can do is borrow that money and spend it and stimulate the economy so that I may have a job and other financial resources available to me. So I plead that you eliminate those extra contingency funds and do something with that tax rate that's above our regional neighbors. The Q&amp;A answers are very helpful, and they underscore that at 12,000 median tax, we're 30% higher than the next jurisdiction and double some of those other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have others?
We don't.
Okay. Well, given that we're going to have a public hearing, if you'd like to give a public comment as we get further in the agenda, you're welcome to do that as well. Are we ready to move on to report of the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Hardy, members of council, members of the community. Just a few things to report on tonight. I was going to start off my report tonight with some comments about our Finance Director Kiran Bawa, who has announced that she'll be leaving the city in July, but she has a tendency to show up right on time when her agenda is called, so we'll make those comments when she gets here for the budget item. And so a couple of things to report on. One, we have been putting out word through the city's webpage and through social media about road work that will be happening on Broad Street. This is work that is being done on Broad Street to basically repave, but also rebuild the sort of the substructure of the road in front of Modera Falls Church. This is work that is part of the voluntary concessions by the developer to rebuild that roadway, and it's the last phase of the public improvements that are associated with that project. So the work will be managed by Mill Creek, and they will be taking down each of the lanes of the road of Broad Street, and then regrading them and then repaving them. This work is extensive because it gets into the subsurface of the road, so we anticipate all-in that this is going to be a month-long project. And for those single-lane closures, those will be 24-hour closures. We are doing everything we can to make this work go as quickly as possible, but we do acknowledge that it is going to be disruptive, possibly for up to a month as this work is being done. The kind of the heavy part of it is slated to begin tomorrow. Now, tomorrow is supposed to be a really rainy day, so if weather's not permitting, it may be put off until the weather clears. But I wanted to sort of emphasize the public messaging we're having about those road disruptions. Now, we have, Mill Creek has put up message boards well in advance of this project to encourage travelers to take alternate routes and avoid some of the congestion that will be associated with this project.
Mr. Shields, before you go on, we appreciate all the public messaging, but I think that people would benefit from understanding the why, because it looked like the streetscape had reopened, we were nearly done with the project, and so have it all torn up and everything restart again. I think people are quite frustrated that the end really wasn't near.
Right. So what the issue is, is making sure that the stormwater flows properly around the project. And so the final grade of the intersection, which was noted in the site plan, we've had a fair amount of back and forth with the developer about that scope of work, but we have reached agreement that the developer will do this work, and that's why it's happening now at the sort of the tail end of the project. The sidewalk itself, particularly at the intersection, that work was built at the wrong grade, and so with the city's inspections, the developer had to go back out, take that work out, and then reconstruct it at the correct finish grades. So that's some of the background with the work that's happening out there right now.
Okay. Well, thank you to our staff for catching it. I think we certainly wanted to get it right, and so appreciate everyone's patience through the disruption, but clearly it's something that's important to get done before we fully open. Thank you.
Second thing to report, we do have Bike to Work Day coming up this week, so on Thursday, May 15th, encourage everyone to bike to work. There'll be a pit stop in the city at Little Falls and the WND Trail. All are welcome to stop by that. Hopefully, the weather will have cleared by Thursday. Also, we'll have Bike to Market Day on Saturday and Victorian Day at the Cherry Hill Farmhouse, also Saturday morning, which will feature early bicycles that will be, early bicycle models that will be on display. I want to give a note about Memorial Day. So this is our last meeting before Memorial Day, so I just wanted to put a note out to welcome everybody to join the city in our observance of our men and women of the armed services who have given their lives and service to this country. We'll do that through one of the greatest, the biggest celebrations in the city that we hold each year. It'll start, we'll have rides and vendors all day right here at the City Hall campus, the 9:00 AM Fun Run. And at 11:00 AM, we'll have the Memorial Day Observance at our Veterans Memorial right in front of the community center. And at 2:00 PM, we'll have a parade down Park Avenue with the Grand Marshall Bing Browns Hardware Store. So the employees of Browns Hardware will be leading our parade this year. I do want to note, you may have seen that the community center HVAC project is advancing along, the work where the seven geothermal wells were put in in front of the community center that has been, there's a new finished paving on that in time for Memorial Day events that will be coming up at the end of this month. We do anticipate that the community center will be back open to the public in early June as that project is on schedule and aligned with the original schedule for it. And so those are the things I wanted to report on tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Do we have questions or council requests for Mr. Shields? Start over here, Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Shields. A couple of quick questions. When you were talking about the construction, it pinged in my head, do we have a timeline for when the lane will be returned on Haycock going towards 7? It's sort of a back way a lot of people used to get to Meridian, and it was closed for a long time while Meridian was being, I'm sorry, while West Falls was being built. And now that Hitz Headquarters is being built, it looks like it's closed again. So is that just indefinitely going to be closed? Traffic backs up, as you can imagine, a lot during the evening. Parents are trying to race their kids to practices and things like that, so I just was wondering if you knew. I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything.
Well, so in terms of Haycock Road from Mustang Alley to the intersection, that work, we do anticipate that that's in its final stages, and that should have final paving on it, and the final signals installed, et cetera, by late May, early June. And so that's what we're anticipating will be happening then, and then that should be the end of construction for that section of Haycock. Of course, then follow-up in the county section, that frontage is going to be impacted by the construction for three more, three years to come, unfortunately.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you. And a couple of other things. I did receive a question from a neighbor who had followed our discussions about where we were going to cut some money for the budget and specifically about the New Year's Eve celebration. And she had asked, you know, if we were to cut it, would there be, she is the mom of four young children, and I think, you know, I think a lot of the community hasn't really gotten wind of this yet, that this may be going away. And I think for, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just putting this out there, I don't think a lot of younger families know about this yet, and I think they do utilize it, you know, as something to do when you have younger kids. And so her question was, is there any way that we could do fundraising or corporate sponsorships or anything, you know, and I was thinking, could we do a scaled-down version? I know that Mayor Hardy's worked a lot within our Economic Development Office, you know, maybe there's some kind of punch-card thing that we could do, you know, to, you know, there's some, you know, you have the ice cream store there, you have Toy Nest, you have Doodle Hopper, you have Clay Cafe, you know, I'm just wondering if we could try to, if that does go away, if we could maybe put our thinking caps on and try to think of some kind of alternative, because I do think our younger families are going to miss that. So just to throw that out there. So I guess that was more of a comment than a question. But, and then my other, I guess this is a request, we, Ms. Hiscock and I did hear from a city resident who lives at 319 Lincoln, and in front of her house sits back, and there's sort of like a gravel access road, and I think there's a little patch of land which they call Trolley Car Park. And so it's, you know, I think as the spring goes on in the summer, it gets really full of weeds and overgrown, and because it's right in front of her house, it's, you know, an eyesore, and, you know, she does acknowledge that the city will come every once in a while and remove the weeds, and then they just go back. So I didn't know if that was something that we could look at, you know, once the Lincoln Project starts. I didn't know if that was anything that we could just take a look at. But she's, this is, I think, something that she's been, over the years, been, you know, in touch with the city about because it's just not maintained, and I guess it's technically a park, so it is, I guess, the city's responsibility. So we'll just throw that out. Thank you.
Yeah, we did bring that up one other time, probably about a year or two years ago, and there should be a formal comment on the request line as well on that, hopefully reaches the city to comment.
So just to maybe briefly comment on both. So first, with respect to Watch Night, you know, what I would encourage people to think about in terms of our public events is how we evolve as a community and try to have events that are going to have lots of participation and are kind of the most kind of inclusive celebrations that we can have for the city. And New Year's Eve has been a difficult night for us to kind of get that critical mass of participation. Some years, we've had pretty good participation, but then bad weather, and then, you know, you go through a lot of work and a fair amount of expense, and so that's why we put that forward as a thought, let's think about this differently as we go forward and not do it the way we've been doing it. What the budget reduction for Watch Night specifically is, is for the expensive closing down Route 7, and then the kind of the sound system and the entertainment and the rides and the inflatables. And so that would be taken out of the budget, and if the council does do that, then, you know, we would not plan to do that work. And speaking with the Little City Catch Foundation, they have been applying for a grant through the city's arts programs that funds some of the events for the, for families. It is my, what I've been told is they think that they would like to still apply for that grant and probably have a different type of event, might be lower, smaller scale with churches or other organizations. So they are thinking that way. Maybe more information to come between now and then. But what the budget reduction would stand for is sort of the, sort of the larger elements of the event would not be funded.
Right. And I, I'm not advocating to change, and I completely understand the, putting the work and the money into it, and then it's a terrible weather night and no one shows up. I completely get that. So I think, you know, just, you know, as the council and other, you know, city organizations maybe just sort of rethinking it and seeing if there's different things we can do that night that don't cost the city so much time and money. So thank you.
And with respect to Lincoln Avenue, I'll get back with our staff on that. I know that that is an area that we struggle with. It's a pretty large area, and it is overgrown, and I think it's just not on our list of things that we provide a high level of service for like we do other streetscapes. But I'll circle back with staff just to confirm that, and we could talk about what we do differently on that in the future, but currently we've not given it a lot of attention.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Flynn?
I just had one comment, and it might be that Ms. Adesian could comment on it when the grocery store comes up, but there was a public comment about accessible parking spots at the West Falls Church Development, and I'd thank, you know, Huffman for responding to that and pointing out the two parking garages. I haven't looked at this in any sort of depth, but my understanding was always that parking facilities are sort of treated differently. So if you have a lot, for example, and you have a parking garage, that you look at the parking calculations for accessible spots differently for the lot versus the garage. And so I was a little bit surprised in that, like, we have that middle, you know, the drive aisles and that there are parking, or even if they're short-term parking in those drive aisles that are surface lots, that anyone who needs accessible parking would still get, like, funneled to the parking garages, and that there won't be any designated accessible spots within the surface parking facilities. And so I would just ask the staff and the developer to take a look at whether that's actually in compliance or whether there might be something we can do to accommodate more short-term parking and more shorter accessible routes to those, whatever they're called, courtyard, I'll call them the courtyard, the middle-facing businesses.
So the accessibility of the site is something that's studied very closely through the design review process at Site Plan. And so we did get the complaint just about that space. What I believe is the case is that the spaces were put in per Site Plan and through that design process, which is done with the kind of the code book in hand in terms of making sure that the site layout meets all of the standards that we require developers to comply with. We will circle back just to confirm that, but that's my understanding of the situation.
Okay. Other questions or council requests? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I have two. I think Ms. Flynn covered my one about accessibility. While we have actually our South Lee neighbors here, Mr. Shields, can you talk about the process for the rezoning application that's in front of us for South Lee? Because I don't think it's actually even on our council's schedule until June, if that's correct, but I think it would be helpful for members of the public to understand where we're in the process. We have yet to have a public discussion about it, and so I would say that we are very early on, but I would like Mr. Shields to kind of share more about how rezoning applications like that work so the neighborhood at least understands the process ahead.
So, and we can try to provide more information about this in writing as well, but the June 2 work session is when this project is docketed to come before the city council, for the council to get briefed on what is being asked for by the developer. The land is currently zoned R1A, and the future land use map, there is a designation that it could be, that a rezoning to T could be supported, but there's kind of a whole analysis that has to happen where staff will give some recommendations and do that sort of analysis against policy and present that to the city council. The developer also would be at that June 2 meeting to state their case, but that's what would happen at that initial work session. From there, we would get direction from council, and from there, it would be, you know, depending on what that direction is, we would schedule from there.
Okay. I had just one more thought to that. When it comes to us, can you also give the history? There are mentions of requests for sidewalks and neighborhood traffic calming on that, you know, the dogleg that is North Lee Street. If you could just bring us information on the history of what's been asked for, what we've considered for that whole area as part of that as well. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one other request I'd make, because it's scheduled for a work session, and traditionally, we don't allow
From there, we would get direction from council, and from there, it would be, you know, depending on what that direction is, we would, we would schedule from there.
Okay. May I add just one more thought to that? When it comes to us, can you also give the history? There are mentions of requests for sidewalks and neighborhood traffic calming on that, you know, the dog leg that is North Lee Street. If you could just bring us information on the history of what's been asked for, what we've considered for that whole area as part of that as well. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, one other request I'd make, because it's scheduled for a work session, and traditionally we don't allow the public to speak during a work session, but if the developers allowed to speak during the work session, it seems the public ought to be able to speak as well and raise their concerns. I also think we need to really examine the issues that our, our, our citizens have brought to us tonight and previously in letters, and hopefully we're going to go through and address each and every one of their questions and concerns. And, and finally, lay out in more detail what the process is, and also the impact of approving this project and its potential precedent-setting effect on other similar requests to convert R1A or R1B into T1 to allow greater, more dense development. So those are the requests I would make about both the work session and how we move forward.
We'd be glad to hear from members of the public during our two regular meetings a month. We also take, obviously, written public comment, and we received a number of them from the South Lee neighborhood. You also should know that council holds office hours. I hold them personally. We also hold group ones the first Wednesday of every month at 9:00 a.m., so we would be glad to engage with you all and share more about your comments. So we have your contact information. We'll reach out. Would love to continue the dialogue. And I think we'd like to keep it probably in those regular meetings to keep our work sessions tight, so. My second request, Mr. Shields, going back to my list, is are the two properties we acquired for open space acquisitions on Sharrow and Cameron, do we have a date on when we might demo those? And then if not, I want to make sure it's on the city's maintenance plan, because it is quite overgrown. I ran past them earlier. That was on Debbie's bingo card, I guess.
Right. We'll follow up with that, with that information and the work that needs to be done.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. LaGenes, I don't know if you're able to stay through the budget, but when Karen's in here, perhaps she can further address the contingencies and the way she's explained it, you know, previously to council about why we have them, and maybe we can have a continued dialogue on that as well. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming in.
Okay, with that, I think we're ready to move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you call the first item, please?
Yes, our first item is a public hearing on TR-25-09, Resolution to amend the voluntary concessions, community benefits, terms and conditions associated with the West Falls Economic Development, West Falls Project. Special Exception Entitlement, S.E.E., approved by Resolution 2021-23, dated August 9, 2021, to reduce the minimum size of the grocery store component from 39,200 square feet to 32,900 square feet.
Thank you. And so we have Henry Zhang, who is our lead planner for this case, and he'll give a staff report on this. This is now before council for final consideration. And we also have Mary Beth Avadizian, who's also participating virtually. She's representing the developer, Hoffman Associates. So, Mr. Zhang, why don't we turn it over to you first?
Thank you, Mr. Shiro. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Henry Zhang, planning POC for the West Falls Project. Council is requesting to take action on a proposed amendment to the volunteer concession associated with the West Falls Project. This amendment would reduce the minimum size of the grocery space for 39,200 square feet to 32,900 square feet. The change to the technical staff report since the council's public hearing on April 14 are highlighted in gray, started in line 18 to 21, also in lines 108 to 10, excuse me, 102 to 108. The Plating Commission held a public hearing on May 7, and unanimously recommend approval of TR-25-09 to the city council for tonight's hearing. Staff recommends adoption of TR-25-08. This concludes staff presentation. I'm available to answer any question. Thank you.
All right. Do any council questions or comments? Ms. Underhill?
I just want to clarify for anybody listening who might not have seen the presentation before, this, there would be no net loss to the city in terms of revenue from the grocery store by reducing the square footage. Is that correct?
That's correct. Because of the reduction, the applicant slash developer here is the Hoffman Association. They provide the calculation in the, in the statement of justification. The city will have the same amount of the revenue from this grocery store, grocery store, excuse me. And then in addition, there is a surplus of 3,300 square feet. That will be attracting additional tenants, and then this will create additional revenue for the city, for the city. Thank you.
It's good to confirm. What else? Okay. I don't think we're required to hold a public hearing tonight, but for the few members of the audience, we--
This is actually a public hearing, yes.
Okay, so we are. Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And any members of the audience, you're welcome to comment. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any final comments or may have a motion? Move to adopt TR-25-09. All right, looks like Ms. Connelly did have a question.
After she's--
I think you were done. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Because Underhill on the second. Go ahead, Ms. Connelly.
Before we pass this one, I know Ms. Avadizian is here, and I have a couple of questions for her related to how the commercial development is interacting with the school development. One of the things that we have talked about a lot is surge parking. I know someone asked Ms. Hardy about it recently, and the MOU talks about 15 days that the school division can have two hours of free parking, and those days should be worked out between the schools and the parking vendor. In dealing with the parking vendor, the schools have come up against a requirement to purchase very expensive equipment in order to be able to take advantage of the surge parking. And I'm just wondering, since you're here, is there a way we can work this out such that the schools don't have to purchase very expensive parking equipment? Is there a way to just use a QR code that could be shared with staff? And I know you're not the parking vendor, but it is, it's just one of these things that is nagging, and we all know that it was part of the comprehensive agreement, but the, the making it happen has a lot more steps than what we expected.
I am not the parking vendor, but I did speak with them right before this meeting, having gotten a heads up of your concern. And I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself. I am Mary Beth Avadizian with Hoffman and Associates, Senior Vice President and the Principal Project Director for the West Falls Project. And thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Back to the subject of the parking, we certainly are planning to honor the MOU that permits the school to use the parking garages free of charge for two hours on 15 event nights per year. Implementing a process by which that can happen is pretty simple. What I've been told, there are two ways. One, you just described, purchasing an expensive piece of equipment that will allow people one at a time to validate their parking ticket and wait in line to do that. Alternatively, there's a zero-cost process that the vendor explained to me, that he will assign a login address for the schools, and that can be used on a iPad, a laptop, a phone, a smartphone. You might designate a number of volunteers to have access to that portal at any event, let's say a football game, for instance. Instead of there being one person, one machine to swipe your card or to stamp your card, you could have four to six, or however many you would like to designate, volunteers. As you approach the individual, they can do a loudspeaker announcement, they will type in the, the number on the person's card into the portal, it'll automatically validate it, they can go on their way and, and leave the, the event without having to pay for two hours of parking. It doesn't cost anybody, and it's, I think, actually a little more flexible than having only one expensive piece of equipment that everyone would have to stand in line to, to punch a card. It's also higher tech and probably more in keeping with the way the world is going to be ultimately anyway, more digital oriented. So there are options, and I think to the extent we need to explore those outside of this meeting, we're certainly open to chatting more with you about it.
Yeah, I think we need to discuss it further. The problem with the option you described, which sounds like a good option, is logistically we're going to have, the schools will have people coming from different events, that's why we would need surge parking. And the logistics of getting volunteers to do that job, or staff members to do that job, makes it, you know, parking is fully automated coming out of the garage, but then the schools would have to add a human interaction there that just seems to be an extra unnecessary step. So I'm just wondering if there's a third option, and, you know, neither you nor I are the parking vendor, but would love to go further down that with you in the future. So let's plan to do that. And then my other question, and we got this from a community member, she emailed several of us this weekend, about trash that's blowing out of trashcans that are on the West Falls Development. There were crows and birds and spreading it around, and I'm just wondering about the trash pickup schedule and how that works, just to--
Get that under control. My apologies that that has happened.
It happens.
Between trash, between trashcans, and then we still have construction going on and construction workers taking their lunches and leaving things. It's, it's something we have to constantly stay on top of. I apologize that we've had it, that get a little bit away from us in that instance.
Thank you. And then the last question is just about signage. There have been a couple instances where there's signage from the commercial development that has ended up on the school's property to Levine School of Music. There was a, a sign for the alder that was sort of blocking the visual coming out of Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. And I'm wondering if that's another thing that could be conveyed to all the tenants, that all of their signage and should be, remain on their site, not on the school site, as well as all their parking?
Yes, we have conveyed that message. Hopefully that has, has stopped happening. But yes, we apologize that a few people, you know, people do things without letting us know, and as soon as we, as soon as it's brought to our attention, we address it and, and have dealt with it. And unfortunately, when you have a, a few rogue tenants try to do their own thing, we have signage planned for the site. It got a little bit behind schedule for us, so it won't be going in until somewhere in July. That will give people better directions to the schools, to the parking garages, to the hotels and things of that sort, so that would circumvent the need for any of that sign. But we understand completely that, that tenant signage that's West Falls-oriented should not be on the school properties, and we'll deal with it on each occasion. And hopefully, you all should feel free to call us when you notice things like that, and we can jump on it right away.
That's great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Avadizian. We appreciate the partnership with the schools on this.
Madam Mayor, just very quickly, I'm, I'm willing to support this because there's no loss in revenue to the city, but I've seen prior changes where there was a loss of revenue to the city that I opposed, so I'm willing to support this one. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any final comments before we call roll? Okay, please go ahead. Madam Clerk?
Are you good? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Connelly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscoc?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Congrats and thank you. We look forward to that grocery store building out and opening. Okay, let's move on to the second item, which is the budget.
Yes, our first budget public hearing is TO-25-02, Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2026 General Fund, Sewer Fund, Stormwater Fund, Cable Access Fund, Affordable Housing Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Community Development Authority, and Capital Improvement Program Funds, and to adopt the FY26 to FY31 Capital Improvements Program.
Great. Mr. Shields?
All right, well, thank you, Mayor Hardy, members of council. So we have tonight a few slides that we'd like to walk through that will communicate with the public about what's before the council tonight for final action. But before we launch into that, I did want to just note, this, Karen Bawa has, since the last council meeting, Karen Bawa has announced publicly that she plans to leave the city in early July and join the city of Piedmont, California, which she left actually eight years ago to come and join us. And Karen has been a tremendous member of our team. When she came to the city, we were right in the midst of planning for a bond referendum to finance the high school. Karen put together a plan of finance that we used to help explain to the public how we planned to pay for the high school, and, and we followed that plan with, with great success. The city achieved AAA bond ratings with Karen's, under Karen's stewardship, working with the city council, and also picking up the reins from prior councils who did a lot of hard things to build the city's financial conditions with prior finance director, Richard Licondre. Karen worked with our school colleagues to craft a revenue sharing agreement that we have followed for the past seven years, and it's brought a sense of regularity and predictability that has helped, I think, both the school board and the city council navigate budgets. Certainly has helped staff navigate budgets over the past seven years. And she's done all this with good humor, patience, and wisdom to address issues big and small, and she's been a very valued member of our team. So with that, Karen, I'll make you give the presentation tonight if you'd like to. Karen puts together all the slides every, every time.
And actually, before, let's, let's kind of say whatever we want to say about Ms. Bawa, but I know that Ms. Connelly also needs to read her disclosure before we start talking more about budget, so. Karen, we're sad that this is your last budget with us. You really have led the city during a really remarkable time, during all the things that Mr. Shields talked about. I think the fact that we were just talking about West Falls and architecting that kind of plan and paying for $120 million high school, the city hall, and the library at all the same time, which kept me up at night for about two years. I'm so grateful for your wisdom and your steady hand through that, so thank you.
Thank you. If I may say that I'm deeply grateful for this opportunity and really appreciate the support and the collaboration and friendships that I've enjoyed over the eight years. Obviously, it's not, nothing is possible with one person, so I appreciate the direction from council, Mr. Shields' leadership, and then support from my staff and my peers, all the directors here. Extremely grateful. Thank you.
Great. So before we get to the slides, we'll read the disclosure.
And I'll just, I'll echo what Ms. Hardy said, too. You have really raised the bar for us as far as the understanding of the budget and brought all of us along to, to, to learn from you, because you're an expert on all of this, so thank you so much. And now I will say, the Falls Church City Council is discussing the FY26 budget. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, which may be affected by the proposed fiscal policies. As a result, I'm in a group of three or more people who may realize a reasonably foreseeable direct or indirect benefit from the proposed ordinance. After consideration, I'm electing to participate in this transaction because I'm confident in my ability to participate fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Mr. Shields, please proceed.
So I have just a few slides that will really, for the public's benefit, to kind of walk through the changes that we've gone through and what's remained in the budget. This, this remains a very strong and, and very full budget to meet the city's needs as a growing community, but also acknowledges the fact that the National Capital Region is going through a lot of disruption right now, a lot of employees being, federal employees being laid off, or contractors being impacted by changes to the federal government, and we're working through all that together, and we had to make some adjustments to the budget in light of that. And I've pressed for, there, maybe this button will do. Not sure why this is not going. So when I have it on teams, it won't advance slides. So that's a problem. So what we will do is, is I'll just verbally go through the material. I think the council is familiar with it. The key thing to note is that the budget ordinances and everything, and the tax ordinances are now before the council for final consideration. We presented the budget on March 24. And since that time, we've had a number of town hall meetings and work sessions. We have a revenue revision of $1.2 million reduction in local tax revenues. And to address the shortfall, the revised real estate tax rate that's before the city council is $1.20 per $100 of assessed value, which is a one cent reduction from the current rate. And that accompanies about $261,000 of spending reductions on the general government side, and $145,000 in spending reductions on the, on the school, or reduction to the school transfer. There's some adjustments to the CIP as well, including adding funding for the Aurora House to add rooftop solar, and removing funding for playground equipment at Crossman Cavalier Trail Parks. I will note that with the CIP, we have some underspending of other wrecking parks projects. And so we will still, even with the reduction in the budget for the playground equipment, we will proceed with the Cavalier Trail Park project. It's about $375,000, and we'll be using unspent CIP dollars to advance that project. That would come back to the council for a contract approval, but that's what we would plan to do. So with these changes.
Right. I'll just note I'm able to share it now, so.
Very good. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate. We should always have you drive the slides as opposed to me. I think that's probably the best policy. So the general government, with the reductions in spending that I just described, will still be growing at 6.3%. So again, this is a growing community, and this is a budget that reflects that growth. The school transfer will grow by 5.3%. We are setting aside funds for revenue contingency in light of the economic difficulties that we're anticipating. Debt service is going down. The pay-as-you-go and capital, use of capital reserves is also going down. Tax relief and incentives, this is unchanged since the original presentation, but we're putting $763,000 towards senior tax relief based on existing policy for tax relief for people with, that are eligible for those programs. So all, with all together, then, a 3.2% decrease in the budget from year to year. The general government expenditure reductions include eliminating the director position for the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development, eliminating watch night, which we discussed earlier tonight. There's some HR software, NeoGov HR suite, which we will be canceling. Renewable energy credits, I will reduce that by 13,000. Now, we're also investing in solar with the Aurora House project to offset that. And there's an increase to emergency assistance. So for a total of $25,000 is in the budget for emergency assistance for rent relief, utility bills, that, for people who come in seeking that through our Department of Human Services. So an overall reduction of 261,000. A tax rate of $1.20 is a one penny reduction from the current rate, with rising assessed values for homes in the city, for the median home. That would result in just over a $550 increase in the annual tax bill. There are no changes proposed for the personal property tax rate, and utility fees will have some small adjustments to reflect inflation. So the sanitary sewer, that will have about a $14 impact for your average household over the course of the coming year. That's the total annual impact. And then for stormwater, a $10 annual impact. In terms of new items that are in the budget, compensation is a very important part of this budget, of $2.1 million of new spending for our city workforce. Interjurisdictional contracts also has been a big expense in this year's budget, just under $1 million, going to increases to our Fairfax County and to our Arlington County contracts. We've discussed the fire services contract, which it alone is an increase of $500,000 in the coming budget. One of the main initiatives in this year's budget is increasing our street maintenance budget, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit more detail shortly. Some investments in IT and financial systems, and then the $535,000 of the revenue contingency. That is, it's a short list of new initiatives that are in this year's budget. Some of the key investments, I just mentioned, our workforce investment, a 5% merit increase and a police cola and stuff. That's the equivalent of a 5% increase is a key part of this year's budget. Investments in our city IT system so that we can provide technology systems that will serve our residents well with accounts payable or tax billing, as well as our permitting function to continue our investments in those areas. Affordable housing, we're sustaining our funding there in the amount of $500,000. That's the same as last year. And emergency rent is increasing to $25,000. In the areas of advancing safety, we have investments in our body worn and in-car camera refresh, neighborhood traffic calming, our ongoing fire hydrant, installing new fire hydrants in the cities where we're underserved, moving the city's professional standards manager position forward, and the Arlington Fire Contract increase that I mentioned just a moment ago. Investments in our core infrastructure, some, the key one there is an overall $2.2 million for roadway maintenance. That's a $700,000 increase over the current year, and there's a breakout of how we'll use that money. But we will be able to pave more streets next year is the bottom line. Also, the investment in the Aurora House, which we noted earlier. The CIP remains kind of the main way that we're investing in our roadways and transportation safety, $9 million investments in FY 26, $1.1 million in investments in our public buildings, a $14 million investment in our sanitary sewer system, with, one of the main projects there is the peak flow equalization basin that is part of our purchase agreement with Fairfax County. And then other smaller investments through our CIP. So a CIP in total of $25.8 million. We are not planning to issue debt. That will be supported by general taxes in the coming year, but we do have debt that's planned for the sanitary sewer fund in the coming year. And we have $46 million in grant funds that we're anticipating coming to the city over the six-year period of the budget of the CIP, as well as a $9.5 million use of our capital reserves over the six-year period. For solid waste, we are moving forward with a solid waste task force that will be working over the next two months to flesh out some of the ideas that we've been discussing with city council about how we can move away from having solid waste services embedded in the tax rate and replaced with a solid waste fee. We anticipate that that task force will get underway very soon. We'll have recommendations to the council in early August. And if the council then desires to take action on those, there could be first reading on both a change to the tax rate and to create this new solid waste fee. Action on those could be in August with second reading in September. And if that is done, it could then show up in the 2025 real estate tax bill, which is mailed out November and due in December. So we'll be working hard on that. I've asked Andy Young to be our staff lead for this task force. I've reached out to community members to solicit participation in this task force, and I think we'll be able to hit the ground running very shortly. So we appreciate people's interest in this, interest in their participation in it. And then the last thing I'll note, the future outlook, we are anticipating that the National Capital Region will be going through some economic disruption. And to prepare for that, and when we think back to the Great Recession, we are in a stronger position today than we were when we, when we went into the Great Recession. We have a revenue contingency built into this budget, as well as an expenditure contingency. That expenditure contingency is comprised of essentially the delta between the $261,000 in general government reductions in spending and the $127,000 that was required with the, with the penny, with the change in the tax rate. Emergency assistance, that is, you know, we currently, we use, we have funded emergency assistance in the past with ARPA money, but we, for the first time, have some local money to help households that might be experiencing financial difficulty over the coming year. And we also are going into the difficulties with very strong capital reserves and, you know, our unassigned fund balance is at policy. And we have high credit ratings if we have to access the capital markets to meet city needs. So with that, I want to thank everybody, the members of the public who've shown up at the many town hall meetings that we've had and the public hearings that we've had. And hopefully, the budget that's before the council tonight reflects listening that we've had through that process. And I'll turn it over now to the council for your questions, comments, and ultimate action.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the past six weeks of budget work. We know that there was a bump in the road, and we appreciate staff's work to come up with options for us. Okay. Do we have questions or comments for Mr. Shields or Ms. Bawa? Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Shields. And Ms. Bawa, are you sure you want to leave? I get, come on. No, on a serious, serious no. This is a more formal setting. So I would just want to thank you for all of your work. And I, you and I didn't get to work that close, but I also worked with you when I was on the school board. And, you know, you've done so much for the city, and you're really going to be deeply, deeply missed. So thank you very much, and best wishes to you. Mr. Shields, two quick things. One, I know we had a public comment earlier this evening about the contingencies funds. And I also know with the unassigned balance, that's part of the reason why we have such a high credit rating. Is that correct? That we have, that we have that policy to put money into an unassigned fund balance?
It is. And it's also because of the fact that by, you know, all of our metrics in terms of the amount of debt that the city has, in terms of debt per capita, debt as compared to value of assessed value, we are, you know, at the top of all of local government in our peer, local governments in our peer group, because we have taken on such really significant investments in our infrastructure over the past seven years. And because we're, because we have so much debt, is why it is necessary to manage our reserves very wisely and make sure that we can, when you have a lot of debt, you have less flexibility, you have mandatory costs that must be met. And so it's appropriate to have some cushion to deal with contingencies.
Thank you. And this isn't for, to change anything for this budget we're considering tonight. But to talk about the traffic calming, I know that we had talked about it, I can't remember, the meetings all blend together, but we were talking about more of it from a process perspective. And I know Mayor Hardy talked about, you know, maybe sometimes we have to go top-down, you know, when, because it's a very cumbersome process, right? And it's very, it takes a lot of time on behalf of the staff. That's one piece. But I guess my question is, is $200,000 enough for, again, not for this budget we're talking about tonight, but for future budgets, is $200,000 enough? Like, do we go through that money, or is it because the process is so cumbersome, we don't go through? Like, if we had a more streamlined process, maybe we could use three, you know, blow through 300,000. I just feel like there are so many neighborhoods, including one right a block away from me, that are very interested in having these traffic calming measures. So do we, I guess the question is, do we typically use that $200,000? Do we go through all that? And if not, is that more because of, again, that it's hard to get, because the process is pretty cumbersome, that maybe that's a reason that we don't use that whole 200,000?
Well, you know, there's, you know, my, here's kind of my take on the process. The process is not cumbersome for the sake of being cumbersome. The process is cumbersome because people have very strong opinions about their street, and we are committed to working through differences of opinion to try to arrive at consensus on what changes should be made. And that's for the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. But remember that our, kind of our, most of our transportation program is driven by policy and driven by city staff, working with council and keyboards and commissions. That's the 9 million in transportation projects that are in the CIP for the coming fiscal year. That's the 2.2 million for sidewalk and pavement maintenance. That's kind of the mainstream. And NTC is a way when things that aren't being, you know, handled through the normal process, neighbors can come together and say, we'd like your attention to address an issue here. But then, you know, once you have that conversation, others might not want those changes, and we just have to work through that. So the, we do typically spend it, I think. And I will acknowledge that it is slower than, you know, when the neighbors who want these changes, they would like it faster. But the process is because some of their neighbors might have different opinions.
And I want to apologize. I was not implying that the process is cumbersome because of the staff. I'm sorry if that, I know, I understand, because in fact, the project that's going on a block from me has a neighbor who's not thrilled with the proposal that's out there. So I understand, I didn't mean to imply that it was anything with the staff. I know that part of making sure that everyone's voices are heard makes it a longer process. So I understand that. I think, you know, Mayor Hardy, I think her point for you was that, you know, maybe at some point, the council has to say, okay, we're going to just move ahead with A or C project. But, so that was, the crux of my question was the 200. So that maybe at some point, you know, in another budget, you know, next year or the year after, maybe boosting that up a little bit, would just be, I'd just throw that out there. But thank you. Thank you for all of your work. And Ms. Bawa, thank you for all of your work.
Other questions or comments? I did want to plus one Ms. Downs' comments. I think, not a change we need to make in this budget cycle, but I think in general, I think you've heard from council that transportation and street safety is like the number one thing we hear from the community, and wanting to see a more efficient and more throughput through that process, I think we're willing to take on more of that tops-down role if we find that we actually have data that says these streets are dangerous. We're seeing crashes here. And that is an unpopular thing for some of our neighborhoods. But I think, given how we want to be responsive to that issue, I think the signal you're hearing from council is, let's, let's move more in that direction rather than wait for everything to be bottoms up. Other questions or comments? And Ms. Hiscott?
I just have one to start, and it's a quick one on the request from Planning Commission to increase salaries. Can you just talk to the, if we agree to do that, the timetable of it, I presume, is it like city council raises where you have to go through multiple? Okay, so you're shaking your head. Would you walk? Would you walk me through that process and when that decision point would need to be triggered?
Have you looked into it? So I don't, I don't think it requires the process that the city councils, any changes to the city council compensation is. And so we'll schedule that for a work session in the future. But the council, I think, has the ability to make adjustments to board and commission pay, and that's within your discretion.
I agree. Thank you. Other? Ms. Flynn?
I'll just make a quick comment, and I wanted to thank you for your public comment and federal service. I think that all of us have really struggled with what to do with the tax burden. I think we very much recognize, you know, that our residents are tax burdened, and again, saw this with this year's community survey as an area of top concern and are particularly sort of want to be, you know, attentive and responsive to it at this point in time. I do think that we're, you know, we've struggled, and the reason that the contingency sort of line items emerged in this budget is because we wanted to make deeper cuts than our partners and the schools felt like they were able to make or that they were able to publicly have comment on this point in time. And so we didn't want to spend, you know, that money that wouldn't be matched. We were trying to make a $285,000 reduction, and the general government on its side came back to us and found much of that $285,000. But because the schools really were only able to match $145,000 or so of that $285,000 we wanted to reach to give the one and a half cent reduction, we then created those contingency funds in order to respond to sort of the safety net concerns that we, you know, envision, right? That more people in the community may be facing. So I don't think that it's, you know, necessarily the ideal outcome or what maybe the majority even had wanted, kind of coming out of this budget cycle. But again, was really borne out, I think, of our trying to do our work on our side of the budget while also remaining responsive to our partners in the schools and what the school community was saying it needed for the upcoming year, given the growth that it was encountering, as well as the conversations and the work that the schools would need to do in order to respond to our request to find further funding or reduce the expansion, so to speak, to find that tax cut for residents.
Ms. Underhill?
Would you be able to talk a little bit about the park and, the Wreckin' Parks additional budget? That $600,000, where that came from? Could you go into a little bit more detail about that?
Yeah, so with capital improvements programs, they are, have a three-year lifespan. When the council makes an appropriation through the CIP, that money has a three-year term, unlike the operating budget where you have a one-year term, and if it doesn't get spent, it gets back to unassigned fund balance. So over the past three years, the Wreckin' Parks budget, we've come in under spending or had alternative financing to pay for things. And so I've sent out to council what that list looks like, but it comes everything from sort of fixing some of the trails in our parks that came, you know, we had different ways of financing that work. We ended up doing it in-house at a much lower cost than originally budgeted. That's one example. One, which relates to schools, is that we were going to do a 50-50 cost share on the lights of the tennis court at Meridian High School. We ended up being billed less than 50% by the schools, and so we had some cost savings there. In total, over three years, that accumulated to $670,000. And so in looking at that, we said, don't use capital reserves then for the playground equipment. We can use this underspending of prior projects as a way, particularly for the Cavalier Trail Park improvements that are planned. One other thing that I think will be discussed at a future date is the schools are trying to work through options on the baseball field for the fence or the screen. And it is possible that the schools are going to ask for some money for that. And if so, this could be one way possibly to have a conversation about if that need is there, it could be met. But that's our conversation, I think, that would be for May 19th, because that would be part of the budget amendment for the current fiscal year. That's a bit of context for that number.
And thank you for that. And actually, maybe this is something where I'd need to sit with Karen or you, Wyatt. But would I, would, looking through the CIP, would one have been able to tell that that additional money was in the Park or Wreckin' Parks budget?
No, I don't think, not looking through the CIP, you really needed to see, you know, the, inside the city's general ledger, essentially. And because CIP dollars have a three-year term, they also weren't part of a carryforward. They just, you know, accumulated there. So that's why that money was not as visible as a situation like this typically would be. But Ms. Bawa might be able to answer the question more clearly than I just did.
So in the CIP folder, there's a project sheet for every single project. So there is a--
Ms. Bawa, is your mic on?
Sorry. So in the, in the CIP folder, there is a project sheet for every single project, and it kind of shows the prior year appropriation. It doesn't separate it out which year it was appropriated of the three years, but there is a prior year number, so it gives some idea. But I think when we present the quarterly capital updates, we're talking some budget numbers there, but maybe it is not totally fleshed out any one place. And maybe that's something we should do when we do a quarterly update, that we present what the project budget is, estimated costs, and any projected underspending or reprogramming.
I'm going to jump in there and say, I think that would be great, because my next question is, like, what other, are there other areas that I, you know, maybe I missed that we have 600K someplace? Like, that's the next logical question, right? Is, if we didn't see it there, are there other areas that we may choose to spend on different projects? Or there might be some flexibility you all recommend? So it would be great to see that moving forward.
And I'll triple that one. Because I think the same, the same, I had the same reaction, where it was sort of like, you know, having raised the playground equipment and whether it made sense to spend capital reserve money on it in this sort of, going into next year's economy, right? Or the current economy potentially getting worse and kind of where taxpayer money is best spent. I was somewhat surprised, right? That then the CIP money was theirs underspending. And so I know that the operating budget, you know, is different than the CIP and whatever else, but when we do things like create the $535,000 revenue contingency, in my mind, like the other pots of money, so to speak, aren't necessarily there with the amount of underspending that may be in them. And so I do think some of the insight in terms of trying to respond to the tax burdens that we're hearing about would be helpful going forward to try to address those concerns.
So just to clarify a little bit more, I get what all of you are saying. We do a six-year picture, but we appropriate one year's money. Whatever was appropriated last year is earmarked for those projects that was appropriated for. If we move, if we have to move between projects, or if we're running a shortfall and we have to transfer some other money, it all comes to council as form of, as part of the budget amendments. And if it's in the larger project, like park implementation plan, and how we want to reprioritize if it's any different than what it was projected at the time of budget, when we award the contracts, if there are more than $100,000, that'll also come to council. So there are avenues when that expenditure definitely shows up or the award of contract shows up to council.
Okay, if I can try to understand and summarize. So one, it's good that we have some projects come in under budget, and we are judicious with taxpayer dollars. I think the request from council is, we would like better insight into that before we start spending capital reserves or CIP projects so we can make a more holistic decision. Sounds like there's some processing we can work out. I do want to rewind, though, because I think, Mr. Shields, you talked about a potential request from the schools to support their $800,000 baseball net issue. And I think Mr. Snyder's actually talked about this in the past, where, you know, we're approving one budget now, and then to turn around a week later and talk about a budget amendment for the previous budget, and we're deciding to make spending decisions then, when we were trying really hard to scrub the budget previously, feels a little incongruous. So I do think it is relevant to talk about some of that now, especially because we are looking at making some park cuts in the CIP. And so if we are thinking of funding some of the baseball net issue, I do think that is relevant to discuss now and not save it all for next week or whenever the budget amendment is. I know you sent us an email with a little more background on it, but I guess, so the public has a benefit understanding. I think the one idea is that we could use some of the park CIP underspending that we've been talking about to help contribute to the $800,000 issue. Is that correct?
That's right.
Do we have line of sight on how else the schools are going to plug that issue?
I do not. I think they're still figuring it out themselves. And I think they plan to talk about it with the school board tomorrow night, and then we'll have a conversation about it together next week. The, but the number that, that I think they're working through is in that $800,000 range for the, for the fence. That's the problem they're trying to solve.
Okay. Ms. Downs?
I, I agree with what everyone said this evening about the, you know, pots of money and a better understanding where, where this money may be sitting. But just specifically about the $300,000 or so, I would say that, you know, if I remember correctly, when I was on school board and we didn't put in any lights at the tennis courts, because we were over budget, we were starting to become over budget on the Meridian build, what happened was that Danny Schlitt came in and, I guess, you said it's not quite 50-50, but came in and said to the schools, you know, if I, if I help you put in the lights and I can charge for pickleball, which, if you all know, they're playing pickleball till, like, midnight there with those lights. So I do think that, you know, there's another piece of this whole that we need to talk about, but specifically about this $300,000, I do think that, you know, part of the reason why, when I was on school board, I advocated for a turf field, was that it can be used 365 days a year, it can be rented to all kinds of different people. Meridian never rented that, that baseball field really much before because it was a grass field and it got torn up so easily. So there is a way that, I would envision that Danny Schlitt can recoup that money. I mean, it'll take a little time, obviously, but for those who don't know, travel baseball is, it is just ridiculously, there are so many travel teams looking for fields. And so I do, and in the fall, too, not just the spring and all that. So, and then also, of course, summer camps and all that. So I think eventually he could recoup that, that money. I mean, it's going to take a little while, but I think the idea is there, is that's specifically why we had that turf field in, is that so Parks and Rec could rent that field out. So hopefully that money would come back eventually.
Okay. Other thoughts while we're on CIP? Could we bring that CIP slide back up, please, while? Sorry, that may be a hard ask, given our issues with the slides.
And while we're doing that, I'll just note that there's a lot of partnership at the Meridian campus, where Wreckin' Parks uses those facilities, you know, throughout the summer for camps, for flag football. And so that's a really important relationship, and I think Danny tries to be a good steward of that relationship because it works for the whole community.
Sorry, can we go back to the previous slide? So what we'll discuss, I guess, in the budget amendment is that-- in the CIP, besides adding Aurora House, but through a budget amendment, not through FY26, through '31 CIP is helping with TBD amount on the baseball field net issue. That's what's on the table for us to discuss in a couple weeks, or next week, actually.
That's right.
Do people have thoughts on other things on CIP? I think we're still, are we still fine adding Aurora House and then taking out the two parks?
Just to be clear, taking out those two parks, the Cavalier Trail Parks will be taken care of with part of the underspending in the Wreckin' Parks. And what we're saying is that we would not use the balance of that underspending in Wreckin' Parks to support Crossman. That's an area that we're looking to save on because there's an Arlington County park across the street that is pretty well-developed. But we did talk about the desire to, even if it's not public playground equipment for young kids, to develop that parkland that we own, rather than just having some dilapidated equipment there. So I guess I'd be curious that we, you know, flush that out, too, just what that potential spend would be, you know, with the benefit, the pros and cons of using that one way or the other.
I guess we'll have a May 19th budget amendment we'll talk about, and then we'll talk about another budget amendment for the year end when we close that FY25. Do we have line of sight to?
So the, the things that, you know, here's, I think, what staff will advocate for is, is that we do move ahead with Cavalier Trail. I think we would take a little bit of time to assess Crossman in terms of what, what is the best thing that could happen for Crossman, and that then might be a CIP item a year from now. I think that's the way we would envision that going. And then with respect to the baseball field, I think there's going to be more facts that will be forthcoming that will help inform the council's ultimate decision on that.
Okay. Again, while we're not making that decision tonight, I do think that it's important for all of us to keep in mind that technically, we're talking about FY26 and beyond CIP, but we are going to be facing another capital decision just through a budget amendment. So. Okay?
I guess if that, if it does come back to us, it'd be interesting to see what, you know, what the revenue looks like, having run club sports for a while, I'm a little familiar with that, and though I don't know baseball, I can make some guesstimates on, you know, the ROI on that, and just want to make sure we have all those pieces of information as well when we make that decision. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think the schools also have other requests that they're going to be using their fund balance for, so that's going to be part of the next budget amendment, I mean, the next Monday's discussion as well.
Do we blind a sight to what their fund balance is going to be?
It's provided as part of the budget Q and A. So their fund balance as of June 30th was 2.4 million, and they have not requested any of it to be programmed in this fiscal year so far. I do understand there'll be a request for additional funding, $600,000 and above, maybe a little bit for more, for the concession stand. And they do normally program about $450,000 to $500,000 in their next year's budget. So I'm assuming part of the 2.4 is for that as well, and then I do not know what the rest of it is for. That's the discussion they're going to have tomorrow, and then we're going to have next Monday.
Is it possible to bring that up? Sorry, my screen's really slow. I know it was the last Q and A. There it goes. I think it was question 48.
Yep. Yeah, that's the one. Sorry, it's a little tiny font wise.
So the far right-hand column is what they end the fiscal year with, the past eight years?
Correct.
I will say that, I mean, when I was, usually, they use year-end balance for purchase of school buses. They purchase one to two every year, and the electric buses, I think, are close to, close to $400,000 apiece, the electric buses. So that might be one thing.
And then the field, two, I think that was 2.2 million.
Right.
That was another big one.
But that was last year.
That was, yeah.
Yeah. That was basically a 23.
Yeah. So that 3.821, roughly 2.2 of it was used for the baseball.
Baseball field and buses from the 3.8 million they ended the year with? And then what I heard Ms. Bawa say is that 2.4 yet has not been appropriated?
Correct. Except for whatever they have programmed in the next year's budget.
The $400,000 they get to carry over year to year?
Yeah.
And is that by policy?
No, they normally try to. And policy says they can have up to 2% of their expenditures as a fund balance. And if it's any more, they draw it down or--
Okay. Ms. Underhill?
Just to wrap up some of my--
Just to wrap up some of my remaining questions, can we go back to the budget rather than CIP? Okay. So I do wanna follow up on some of the comments that Mr. Lajanous made. I am very cognizant of wanting to make sure that we are being responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars and that we can return taxpayer dollars as best we can, when we can. In this case, as, as Ms. Flynn mentioned, there's a tricky situation where we are splitting costs with the schools and they were only able to reduce their costs by so much. So in terms of the contingency funds that we do have right now, you know, I imagine that there might be cases where the economy, you know, continues to go down, our meals revenue is not great, and we have holes that we need to plug. I can also imagine that, you know, tariffs are an issue and some of our projects come in over budget. But let's say that by September, or I don't know, later on in the year, it turns out that, that 500 or 600,000 is not needed. What, at what point would we look back at that money and decide what to do? I know that we have major gaps in some projects, like Graining of Lincoln. I know that we have major gaps in funding of our road paving program. Would that potentially be money that could be put to use in terms of road paving and maintenance that we have been previously underfunding? And at what point would we be able to deploy that money or decide that we could do that?
Well, the council could deploy it at any time that you wanted to over the course of the fiscal year. That's the bottom line. The, I think, staff recommendation would be to wait at least until the second quarter financial report is in, and then we'd have a better read in terms of our situation.
And then, I guess, at that point, we could have a meeting to see how much we've dipped into that, or if we haven't, if it looks like we'd run through it or not, and then appropriately deploy it as, as needed, as we see fit.
That's right. And we won't dip into it. The only way that it can be dipped into is through an appropriation with the city council. And so really, over the course of this fiscal year, it would be deployed in the event that we're having revenue shortfalls and then the council says, okay, we can start to use it. And it would be appropriated.
Yeah, it's something that I'm, it's difficult because we definitely have projects or things that we are, especially like our road paving program, that, that absolutely need more capital investment. And so it does, as Ms. Flynn said, it does feel bad to sit on money. But I think also, in this case, given that, we don't have a clear picture as to, and there's a lot of turmoil going on at the federal level, and we don't know what's gonna happen to maybe some of our grants or funding. That, I, it's a tough decision, but, but I do see that this is a reasonable path forward. So, thank you.
And just to be clear, my view on it is that if it's, that, that if the school isn't matching our reduction, and we're, and we're not giving tax relief because of that inability to meet what we wanted to do as a tax rate reduction, that that money is staying in contingency, so to speak. That's really a safety net contingency, a safety net expenditures in order to meet the needs of our resident population at this particular point in time. And then also the revenue contingency. And so I don't view it, like previewing my own views on it, is that I don't view it as a potential place to dip into or to reallocate. Like that, that money was there for, in my mind, a reason. And it should stay there and we shouldn't be previewing potentially, like, you know, deploying it for spending needs apart from sort of safety net needs or increasing the safety net, given potential emergency assistance people may need, like in the fall as they're continuing to bridge severance payments and whatever else with, with new jobs.
Just to put the timeline perspective, second quarter will probably come to you like mid-February. And then that's the time we are preparing the next year's budget. So this could become a larger conversation at that time. And it is, remember, it is a ongoing funding. This is not one-time funding. So we'll see how the year goes and if it remains ongoing or not, we'll figure it out by the end of, by the time we do the second quarter.
I did wanna also briefly talk about the contingency. I think everyone probably saw the news that DC lost their AAA bond rating. I think in general, I think creditors are scrutinizing the DC metropolitan area. And so I was curious whether, Ms. Bawa, you had any perspective on whether our financial advisors have advice on how to not, I mean, while we're not taking out general fund debt, clearly, I think we worked really hard at achieving our AAA bond rating, which helps us, you know, borrow money at a lower rate, right? Means we're doing a good job with taking all that debt. So is that something that our financial advisors are giving us any advice on? Because I'm inclined to listen to them if they tell us, you should not touch your unassigned fund balance and you should be prepared for, you know, storms ahead.
So I've, I've not had a chance to have any detailed conversation about the contingency with them. But what I understand is earlier on in the last few months, each of the rating agencies has come up with a little bit more strict way of looking at our metrics, every jurisdiction's metrics, and evaluating based on that. And it's not just fund balance, that's like the available fund balance that's looked at. It's our debt per capita and it's our other ratios, like we have the debt service to expenditure payout ratio. So we are on the borderline on a couple of those. And debt per capita is much larger than some of our neighboring jurisdictions. They have other demographic metrics that they look at, which are not so much favorable for Falls Church because we, we're not so big on diversification, diversity and, and how the debt is distributed. So for that reason, I feel that we should make every effort that, that we can, especially until we've issued the following debts, like 30 or 40 million that we need in the next two or three years, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and preserving our reserves, contingencies and our reserves in the fashion needed. But I will talk to them, our advisors, and report back.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to have their perspective, especially again, I think there's a lot of scrutiny in our region. Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So the University of Virginia, Welton Cooper Center issued a report predicting a general economic downturn in Virginia as a whole. One would expect that the downturn would affect Northern Virginia more than the state. The current unemployment rate is 3.2%. Welton Cooper estimates that that will go up to 3.9% this year and up to 4.7% by the following year. So by every reasonable expert predictions, we have some very serious and difficult years ahead. And I think this budget is our first effort to try to get ahead of that, if you can, in two ways. First of all, by providing the one cent return. And there's no question that we all like to do more. But everybody is importantly providing for the contingency. That may be the difference between our government continuing to function and one having the difficulty of providing even basic services or support for education. And then the additional contingency of, of $115,000 for potential expenditures that may be needed, as we did during the pandemic, to support our citizens that are in particularly unpredicted and difficult circumstances. I will make one other point. And I think the city manager has said this, but I wanna emphasize it, that growth does bring costs. For the past few years, we've heard discussions only about the upside, which of course are increased property values as a result of new construction. What we've, we're now dealing with very directly is the costs of that growth in terms of increased enrollment in the schools. And while the school buildings may be large enough to contain more students, the fact of the matter is you have to hire teachers and support professionals to teach them fully. And then the CIP contains $14 million for sewer upgrades, many of which are required as a result of the increased demands on the sewer system by the increased building that we've done. All this is to say that simply this, we've grown, we may continue to grow, but there are costs with that. And this budget is the first major clear challenge to do that and that we're meeting that challenge with, with our projections. So I think, as was said the other night, we're balancing the requirements for the general government, the circumstances of our taxpayers, and of course, the schools, which are so fundamental to our community. And I think this budget does a pretty good job of balancing all of those under trying circumstances. And all I can say is that based upon all the predictions, things are gonna get worse rather than better. And so I think the discipline that we've shown this year is a good example of much more of this kind of discipline that we'll have to show in the future. And having gone through the terrorist attacks, the Great Recession, other challenges to the city, I believe that we're being responsible in the budget approach that we're taking here. We can't predict the future, but we can do our best to learn and to understand what, what are reasonable predictions for the future. And so I think this budget does the very best job we can at this point of doing that. Thank you.
I actually had a question before we give more comments. So I think, building off of what Mr. Snyder said, that, you know, we can't predict the future. And clearly, there's a lot of uncertainty. And I think this budget tries to manage through that. And I've kind of said in the past that we're gonna need to be more nimble because I think the environment's gonna continue to change. Can you do your best on when we might have more information on either economic indicators, when we're gonna touch the budget again? Sounds like we're gonna have an FY24 budget amendment next week. We're gonna have FY25 year-end amendment.
September.
In September. Mr. Shield said February 2026, we'll be looking at Q2 FY26 data. So those were three points where we're talking money in the city and have more data. Like, are there other times? Because I think it's important for us to kind of keep in mind that just because we adopt the budget tonight, like there are gonna be other times where actually budget's gonna continue and we're gonna have more data each time. And I wanna make sure that our school partners understand that as we get more information, we may have to be flexible and adjust as needed and make different decisions. Because it is all, frankly, taxpayer money. Like whether we call it FY24 amendment, or FY25 year-end, you know, reconciliation, or look at data again halfway through 2026, like it's all taxpayer money. And I think we need to be responsive to what the changing environment might look like. So could you help talk through maybe, again, we don't know what information we'll get those three times, or if there are other times, but when those timelines might be, so we can keep that in mind?
Sure. So the next upcoming thing is the year, year end. Well, this year's budget amendment that we bring to you. And we're not gonna be asking for any new monies, like appropriation of any fund balance, but we would ask for reprogramming at the very most from one program to the other, or making any department that has overspent hold by using underspending from another department.
Plus the schools' baseball field issue. Will be part of that FY24 amendment.
Schools will be requesting appropriation of new funds.
Okay.
The general government will, probably not. And year end, September, third week is when we bring for you the year-end results report for the city. And immediately following that typically has been a budget amendment because we've seen larger, like 2% to 3% year-end one-time funds. And we have brought to council to address some one-time needs or to place that in the cap reserve. So depending on what we discussed at the third quarter, we will have some year-end based on the interest income and the violations and tickets funding. So there is gonna be some revenue over, but we still don't know the extent of how much the tax revenues are gonna be below and if that's gonna offset. And I think if we're continuing at the rate of what we've done in the first eight months, nine months, we should end with a balance on the revenues. After that budget amendment, I think the next thing we bring to you is the first quarter, which is quite preliminary, one or two months of sales, meals, and personal property is what that first quarter report addresses. At this time, when we bring you the first quarter, the assessor's office is working on, looking at what the region, the growth, market growth is for residential across the region, and of course, our properties. And then we bring you preliminary revenue forecast in the first week of December. So that's another point of discussion on funds. And then following that is the second quarter report, which is mid to late February. And, and mid-February, we also give the exact revenue, the assessment figures at that time. So what the growth has been is as of January 1 date. And then comes the city manager's budget proposal in March.
Okay. So I'm heard May 19 for the budget amendment on FY24, September 2025 for FY25 year-end, December 2025 when you have Q1 data, and then mid-February 2026 when we have Q2 data and we start kind of our part of the budget process. Do you have anything over the summer, like?
Just, can I just add, don't forget the, the trash fee. That would be August. We're gonna reopen it as well in August of 2025.
Although I think the manager's recommendation is to not touch the rest of the budget if possible then. But I don't want to take words out of your mouth.
There's a, there's a really nice chart that we've made in Budget and Finance about what months we're looking at, what things. And we refer to that. And it's super helpful to be able to say, this, now we're looking at the current budget, now we're looking at last year's budget, now we're looking at next year's budget and a month-by-month thing. If we can find that one, Ms. Bawa.
Sure. I'll, I'll share it at the next budget finance. So what we plan to do now, since we saw a down, or maybe flattening of the revenues, I wanna say, the local categories, we will be looking at monthly, like what the March collections are, what the May, April and May and each one. So that's what we're gonna be monitoring. But what the summer months for finance is, working on the year-end and working on the AFCR CAFR, originally called CAFR, but looking at how we're ending the year. And based on that is when we bring you the year-end. So we essentially have two extra months till the end of August that we receive all the revenues that are recorded for fiscal year 25. And then we're wrapping up all the expenditures and voices and things. So that's what happens in summer. We go full on, on the year-end, starting after this budget amendment.
I'm just paying attention to the summer and fall in particular. So I think in the past, we talked about how many federal employees may be paid through September or so. And given the lagging unemployment data we heard about, I guess, six weeks ago, like I just don't think we're gonna see the full impacts. The stats that Mr. Snyder presented, we're just not gonna see all that immediately. And so I think paying attention on a monthly basis, I guess to the extent that the Budget and Finance Committee would like to keep an eye on that over the summer, I think that would be helpful, rather than say, we're done with the budget, we're gonna take a couple of months off. I do think that this is a different environment where I do think that we need extra eyes on it.
And, and I do also wanna see the impact of the new businesses. And are we panning out on those revenues that we have projected, even though it's in, you know, a restricted economy, kind of a situation? But are we a little better than what we would have been if we had not had that growth? So we need to monitor that.
Agreed. Thank you.
Sure.
Final questions or comments? Okay, so right now we have TO25-02. So I'm gonna open the public hearing for any comments from the public. And this is for the budget and CIP. And then we'll get to the ordinance for tax rate and stormwater and other utilities. Any members of the public wish to comment on TO25-02? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any final comments from council? Okay, if not, I will have some comments. So as I reflect on kind of the past six weeks and the conversation we just had about how budget's not really quite done, even though hopefully we adopt it tonight, I guess, two main takeaways for me. One, this is a budget that does actually a lot of good. I think one of the earlier slides, we, even with the tax rate cut, the budgets are going 6% to 7%. And that is actually quite remarkable when you look at, again, in the budget Q and A doc, what our regional partners are seeing. So I think, one, we should pause that we have that revenue growth because of economic development over the past 10 years. We have seen some of that pay dividends. And we've also seen increased property values where we have become a desirable place. So I think that's one thing I wanna put out there. I think with, as we've all acknowledged, this kind of first bump in the road, maybe a lot more uncertainty. may be a lot more uncertainty ahead, and I think we are trying to prepare for that. As I read through all the rounds of public comments we've gotten again, and many of them from fellow school parents, where it's simple, don't reduce the tax rate. I do actually want to make sure that I state my personal, like, budget philosophy, because I think, while it seemed obvious to me, I think the fact that I haven't personally stated it has created probably more consternation, I guess. And so, one, I guess I personally start every budget season with the desire to frankly lower the tax burden and reduce the tax rate because of economic development that we've invested in over the years, and because of the burden of what our high taxes mean for homeowners. I think in the past, when I talked about affordability, it's not only affordable homes and attainable homes, but it's also the bills that you pay. And so for me, that's always been personally important. And I think more so, that is important in uncertain times like we're approaching. And I think the second part of that is, just because you have the money, doesn't mean you should spend it. That's just core to how I approach money. And I've also said that it's not normal to have revenue growth of 6%, 8%. And so if we're expecting years of 2% to 3% revenue growth, it is far easier, in my opinion, to start trimming your budgets to prepare for harder times. Probably have some different opinions in the audience about that. And then, third point on kind of my budget philosophy, it is that it's our specific responsibility up here to set the tax rate and decide how to balance the needs across the entire city. At the beginning of every council, when we are seated, we decide our priorities. We decide, you know, to invest in things like transportation, climate, housing. I think schools are one part of that, and clearly, an important part of the community. But it is our job up here to do that tough balance. And so our budgets are the best time to do that and try to do our best responding to all those needs. So I wanted to at least put that out there, because I do think stating how I personally have approached budgets is not always everyone share that philosophy. And then I also reflected on revenue share. I do think that that has worked well in good times. We've also said very clearly that revenue share is for good times. And so if we are entering a period of economic disruption and tough times, I think how we partner a lot in the coming year matters a lot. So I would ask that, not for the audience who's not here, but for people who may be watching, that we all really try to turn down the rhetoric on budget. I think trust that the seven of us are trying to do our best balancing all those needs that we talked about. Second, as we talked about through the timing part of it, in a changing environment, it's going to be volatile. And I think we need to be a lot more nimble, and we need to be more prepared for the times ahead. And so through this budget cycle, you've heard me talk about, I want a list of levers for revenues and expenditures. So should we decide, you know, come September, the data doesn't look good, we're going to need to do more trimming, the revenue contingency we set aside was not enough? Are we prepared to do that? And so I want us to have that discipline through the budget process. And I think we got some good information and good options from Mr. Shields, and I would look to our school partners to do the same. I think the community expects us to be responsive and thoughtful and collaborative. And I hope that we can keep that in mind as we continue through the next several months, certainly over the summer and the coming year. Okay, I'll take a motion unless I see other comments. Uh huh. Go ahead, Ms. Connolly.
Just following up on what you said, Mayor, and I think it is really important to think about what your own philosophy of doing this is. And when you first get up here, you don't have a philosophy of how to do this. And it takes a while, and it takes a lot of learning from the staff who help us along the way. One of the things I think is very important is the idea of stewardship, that we are stewarding the public's money, and also reflecting what the public's demands are. So there's a high tax burden, and there's a high demand for what people want from the City of Falls Church. And we need to make sure those two are balancing each other out. So one thing I want to make sure is that the seven people up here, and the staff, and the seven school board members and school staff, people put so much time and effort into this. And in the end, we, this is my 12th year of doing this, and we always come down to like, a penny or two pennies, that we're trying to figure out the right way to really worry ourselves through, what's the right way to steward this money? And we could have done it differently this year. We could have done what Mr. Lajana suggested and cut all contingencies out of the budget, and that would have been a penny. But we decided that because of the volatility, we're not going to take that path this year. That doesn't mean it's a bad path, it just isn't the way we're headed this year. So I think that's super important to remember. It's just, what is our responsibility as the stewards of this money that comes from the taxpayer to serve the taxpayer? One of the things I say when I do my disclaimer every meeting is that I can do this fairly objectively and in the public interest, and I think all of us try to do that. Sometimes it can feel much more personal and emotional, and how do you, how do you... And we've had speakers come who are very emotional. And we really try to do this fairly objectively and always in the public interest. As far as the revenue share agreement goes, I do think we need to reopen that for next year, partly with the calendar in mind. Because it had been working so well that we were pushing back our budget, so that the city council will adopt the budget tonight, and then the school board will adopt the budget tomorrow night. And several years ago, it was working so well, the school board didn't need any extra time to rethink their budget, because everything was falling into place. And now we're in a different, much more volatile time, and everything is not falling into place. And what we thought life was going to look like in December and January, and even February, is not what it looks like now because of that larger federal picture. So I think maybe, you know, next year, we're not going to have Ms. Bawa, we're not going to have Kristen Michael, who was the school COO. And the two of you worked so hard on that revenue sharing agreement. So I do think we need to kind of look at the calendar a little bit, so that there's a way to make sure that we're really hitting all those, the points and the marks, so that people understand what's happening, if we're going to have to keep reopening as we go. And then also to look at this as stewards, but also over many years. This isn't just a, we're not just doing 12 months of budgeting. The CIP is six years, this budget plays into next year's budget. We're basing a lot of this on last year's budget. So it's really an ongoing organism, and we need to think about it that way, not just as a, what's the tax rate, and then move on to the next thing. So I do agree, Ms. Hardy, that we need to keep this front and center continuing. So I am going to support this budget. I think, I wish we did not have to go back on what we thought we were going to be able to do when the school board approved their budget. But given what we've heard from Ms. Bawa and what the expectations are in the region, it makes sense to be able to pull back a little bit. So I will support this budget.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think we all have talked multiple times about striking the right balance, and that is our job to find the right balance and to respect, you know, all members of the community. And I, hopefully, this is, you know, we've all made some compromises, and we're giving some back to the taxpayer. We're providing a really solid budget for both general government and schools, which really focuses on our people. And we've been able to maintain raises to value those who are here. We haven't cut any jobs, like many of our other jurisdictions have, on either the general government or the school side. I'm sure if you follow any of the local news, it's not such a great picture in many of our just neighboring jurisdictions on either side. So I think there's a lot to be proud of, and I think a lot of it ties back to focusing on our economic development. And that economic development allowed us, obviously, to have this major high school. And I don't want us to lose track of the fact that wherever our budgets are, we wouldn't have a brand-new high school if we didn't have 10 acres of development. It's just, that wouldn't happen. So everybody support our local businesses, and that'll continue to support our schools and our ability to pay our bonds. We clearly have made a decision as a community to highly value our schools and put this investment in our community. And it is a community asset, both for students and those of us who no longer have, you know, students in school. That said, I also, thinking about ongoing, I also want to make sure, like, one of my roles is to focus on affordable housing and also on the environment. And we are making, definitely making investments in those this year. But if we're looking at ongoing, you know, they're going to be tough decisions to make because we may or may not be able to make our 2040 carbon emissions reduction goals or our affordable housing unit goals. And so it really is a difficult juggling task to try to identify these priorities in the community and fund all of them at a rate that each one of them has positive impact on our community. So I do think that these conversations need to continue happening immediately, you know, that we continue to talk about what those potential scenarios are for FY '27. You know, the city manager mentioned a number the other week that has been haunting me, which was a potential $4 million gap in the next budget year, as a, you know, the high end of things. And these discussions we're having over, you know, $145,000 versus a $4 million gap next year are going to have to be handled delicately and, you know, with great thought and data and care. And they can't just happen in, you know, April or May of 2027. So I appreciate all the work, that incredible amount of work that finance staff and all of our general government and school staff and boards go in to the budget process, thinking about and planning for in advance. And I think next year will be more so, more important than ever to do that and to work collaboratively. So I will be supporting this budget, even though I was, you know, really hopeful we could get to our 2.5 cent tax rate that we discussed and put out to the community in December. You know, and received several email messages to the effect that there are people who aren't coming and speaking publicly, who are appreciative of our efforts to balance that out and to include a tax rate reduction. So thank you to everybody who has come, spoken to council, written council, come to our budget meetings. We've had a tremendous amount of feedback. And I think, I know I speak for all seven up here, that we listen and read and think and engage with intent and with purpose to provide that balance for everybody. So, thank you.
Ms. Downs?
Yeah, I just have a quote. I mean, you all have so eloquently stated why I think we all support this, with this budget. And, you know, one of the things that occurs to me, you know, it is really important that we lower this tax burden. You know, when I look at our surrounding jurisdictions, you know, we're always at the top with our tax rate. And it's also important that we keep our staff, their staff salaries high, so that we can attract the best talent. And so I think, you know, one of those things that we're never going to be in a position, well, I know we were maybe a couple of years ago where there was a huge tax cut. But from here on out, we probably are not going to have that opportunity. And just like we would never have an opportunity to vastly increase staff salaries. So I think every year, we just have to keep chipping away at it the best that we can. You know, a penny is better than nothing. And so I'm glad that we got there. You know, the schools did, you know, the community turned out, and the schools did find that penny. So it took a little bit, but they did. And so, you know, just every year, making sure that we keep those salaries competitive, we keep trying to cut back that tax rate, even if it's half of a penny, that's better than nothing. So I'm proud that we did this. And, you know, thank you to Ms. Bawa and Mr. Shields for really coming to us, you know, as soon as you saw those revenues were not coming in, when you saw those meals taxes and the sales taxes, those leading indicators, you all were on top of it. And, you know, it was obviously bad news, but thank goodness, we were on top of it. And, you know, so I think that's, it's a very responsible budget. You know, we know things are not looking so great. And I think we'd rather be a little conservative and make sure that we're on strong footing, you know, in the upcoming year. So I do support this budget and thank my colleagues and also the school board for getting down, getting to that penny. Thanks.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt TO 25-02 as revised.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Underhill on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanse Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you, council.
Call the next item, please, for the tax rate.
Yes, we're on to TO 25-03, ordinance setting the rate of tax levy on real estate for tax year 2026 and on personal property machinery and tools and all other properties segregated by law for local taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for tax year 2025.
Any discussion on this from either council or staff? Okay, we're, Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to say one other thing that I forgot in my last, my last comments, which is just that I'm also glad that we are adding to our HHS, Health and Human Services, funding, because I think that might be incredibly important in the next year or so. So thank you for working on that stuff, just related back to general comments.
And just like we're going to monitor revenues, if we can kind of keep an eye on how the drawdown of our safety net's going, should we need to make a mid-year adjustment? I think, again, keeping a close eye on what the needs of the community are, that could be a really good indicator.
Sorry, I have one question. Right, this is TO 25-03. Just in rereading the heading now, should the last line of that be for tax year 2026?
Karen?
Great.
No, that's, no. You need to explain this every year.
No, sorry. No. So it's tax, the tax year is 2025, but when it's collected, it's fiscal year 2026, sorry. So it's a little different. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, should we do a, just do the public hearing on this before we go?
Ah, okay, so that public hearing earlier was not for everything.
We need to do a separate public hearing on HIM.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to comment on TO 25-03? Somebody online?
No.
I don't think we actually have any members of the public anymore, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, I think we're ready for a motion, then.
Move to adopt TO 25-03 with a real estate tax rate of $1.20.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Connolly on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanse Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you. Next, are you ready for the next?
Yes, we are.
TO 25-04, ordinance to set the stormwater utility billing unit rate in accordance with Chapter 42, Article 7 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, as of July 1, 2025.
Any questions or comments from council? Will we open up the public hearing for this one? Okay. Any members of the public wish to comment on TO 25-04? Just confirming, no one's online? No. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have a motion.
Motion to adopt TO 25-04.
Second.
Ms. Flynn on the second. Ms. Downs on the motion. Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanse Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you. Are we ready for the final?
Yes, please.
Okay, TO 25-05, ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 42 utilities to revise sewer rates and fees as of July 1, 2025.
I don't see any thing that staff or council wants to comment on. Any members of the public wish to comment on TO 25-05? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. May I have a motion, please?
Move to adopt TO 25-05.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Underhill on the second. Call roll.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanse Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you.
Congrats and thank you. For now. We're done for now.
Till next month.
Till next week.
Till Monday.
Till next week, we're back with the budget amendment. Okay. Thank you very much, staff. We appreciate the work on this one, as with every budget cycle, but this one is especially a tough one when you went in with expectations, thinking it would be an easy one. And I know that that is hard to do mid-cycle, so we appreciate that work. Okay, we only have one more item at the end, even though we're nearing 10 o'clock. So I suggest we just get through the consent items. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So on consent, we have a resolution to amend council assignments and then CIP for security upgrades. People have questions or comments, or want to remove things from consent?
No.
Okay.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hiscott on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Is there appetite to get through schedule tonight and then not meet 8:30 on Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think GovOps is meeting at nine, so it's not like we get to sleep in.
All right, so we will probably pull the, I don't know if, okay, it's coming up on the screen. All right, there it is. So looking ahead to the work session on the 19th, we would have the Maple and Annandale special exception application. We'll have our briefing on the Affordable Living Policy Comp Plan Amendment. We'll discuss crosswalk and sidewalk design standards, and we'll discuss the spring budget amendment that we've talked about, I referenced tonight, council salary and benefits, and then three franchise agreements for Cox, Verizon, and RCN. It is our, I think we have noted here that we would invite some additional board and commission members for those discussions, particularly the first two, the Maple and Annandale project and the Affordable Living Project. And then the third, the crosswalk and sidewalk standards, and then also CACT and EDA and Planning Commission.
Can, can we add Planning Commission salaries to the council salary and benefit conversation?
If that's the council's desire, I would probably recommend having them on different days, just to sort of keep, keep those two decisions separate. And given one is sort of procedurally complex, you might think about keeping them separate for that reason as well.
If there's interest from a majority of council, we can just add it to the to-be scheduled items, that we don't forget about it. I'm looking at, think there's nods from a majority of council, so if we could.
Yes.
Okay, so let's add it to the to-be scheduled, so we don't lose track of that one.
Okay, we'll plug that in.
Thank you.
I'll note it's already on the schedule. Thank you, Mayor.
I think we, okay, so we put it in for a later date?
Under to-be scheduled?
Yeah, but if the manager can look at scheduling it sometime.
Very good. We'll plug it in. So on the 27th, we'll have the youth representatives on our boards and commissions, they'll be recognized for their service. We'll be joined by the Aurora House Board for its annual report. We'll have an update on CIP and strategic priorities. We'll have a post briefing for the 2025 General Assembly Session, and we'll ask for council action on the love sculpture design, and then a vote on resolution on the new design standard for brick crosswalks and sidewalks, spring budget amendment, first reading, the three franchise agreements, first reading on the ordinance for council salaries, and authorization for the Arlington County Fire Services Agreement.
Debbie has a question.
Yeah. On our streetscape, does our streetscape include trash bin styles?
It doesn't. It has a standard for all the street furniture.
We had comments, or actually, I maybe just went to Mary Beth and me this morning about the Arlington style that has, you know, like, it's almost like a lid on top of that, and it seems to reduce the number of birds that get into trash. And since I'm Falls Church one way and Arlington the other way, I use both, and I hadn't really thought about that a lot. So I want to discuss trash bin options, not to replace everything, but moving forward, maybe that's a good option, too. So I know you don't really want to add to that discussion, but it was an interesting one to have.
And I'll, and I'll note that I, too, enjoy the mayor's enjoyment in visiting other cities and seeing the wraps on their trash bins, which can be very stylish.
It sounds like there's interest revisit other things about streetscape standards, but given how long we've talked about just trying to address brick, I guess I would ask whether we can put a pin in those items and try to just solve the brick sidewalk and crosswalks first, and then schedule when we want to talk about other standards. Mostly, I'm looking at Mary Beth because I know how long we've.
Yes, that's fine. Let's focus, let's focus on bricks first.
Great, thank you.
But the trash can is an issue, you know.
Because we've gotten feedback about how the little insert sometimes doesn't go back in. So I know the Arlington style doesn't have that little, like, circular donut thing inside, like, we don't need to talk about it now, but I guess it sounds like at some point, we, maybe as part of A, B's looking at design standards, we can just roll in, like, broader streetscape standards as part of.
Actually, I do have a question about trash real fast, and it relates to the Solid Waste Committee. Those trash cans around the street that Mrs. Hiscott's talking about, does, does our trash vendor do those, or do we have staff that take care of those?
No, our vendor does that, and that is paid out of the tax rate and will remain being paid out of the tax rate, because every one of the community benefits from that.
Okay. But it only, so they only get emptied once a week?
There are certain places in the city where it's more frequent, along the commercial corridor.
Is that something the Solid Waste Committee could look at?
So I think we're going to focus on the curbside service, given the short timeframe, that's our antennas to focus on curbside. If there are other questions, just about other solid waste programs, we could sort of handle those through the normal process.
Okay, thanks. Since we're all on trash, can we talk about South Washington and Annandale trash? Like, we've spent two council kind of service day projects picking up trash there, and I've made our suggestion of, like, we just need some public bins on the 7-Eleven side of the corner, because I'm convinced if we actually just had trash bins there, people would throw their trash in. It's on South Washington and, is it Annandale?
Yeah, I do recall earlier correspondence on that topic.
And I think there was no public right of way, but I'm like, there's, or maybe our vendor doesn't go down Annandale. There was some issue, but again, like, every time I, sorry, run past there, there's just a lot of trash.
Well, you know, I walked down Washington today, and there was a lot of trash and all the trash cans. So that's, I wonder if once a week is enough in a lot of those areas, too.
Okay. Sorry for that detour from the schedule.
Mayor, if I could, so Mr. Shields, the May 27th, the CBC Youth Reps Recognition, I believe that night is our all-night grad celebration. I think it's called Senior Spectacular. Is that right, Ms. Conley?
It is. It's actually graduation day, too.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we should move the CBC Youth Reps to the prior, is it the 19th? 19th isn't a work session, right?
So the 19th is a work session.
Oh, it is a work session.
I wonder if we could do it on the, do you think they'd be able to do it on June 16th, or everyone is gone by then?
That was a specific request from the group, and it is the new youth reps for next year. It's not.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, it's the new ones.
Oh, it's the new ones. Okay, I thought it was thanking the ones that are done.
No, it's appointing the new reps.
Oh, okay, that would be fine, then. Okay. Thanks. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay, then looking at the June 2nd work session, we'll be joined by the Smart Cities Program for an update on, and a presentation on that. We'll have the 106 and 108 Lee Street rezoning application, Broad and Washington easement vacation, and several items on consent, some contract approvals. We will be discussing the subdivision of site plan approval process under the new state code provisions, and then a closed session for annual performance evaluations.
Can we pause on that? I know that Gary had shared with the Planning Commission some early thinking from you, Sally, about that. Is that when, I guess, when is it final? I guess we definitely have to be final by July 1st, right?
Yes, the, the changes need to be implemented by July 1st. And so the conversation will center around what those changes look like to the process, with subdivision ordinance remaining, being able to remain at the Planning Commission, but site plans, not subdivision ordinance, it's subdivision plaits being able to remain at the Planning Commission, but site plans being approved administratively.
And you had looked into the charter, confirming that that wasn't something that the charter would protect against?
That's right. The charter does not regulate site plan approval.
I'm sure we have thoughts on that, or at least it will be a change for the Planning Commission.
I know that, I hadn't, maybe I didn't, I don't know which Planning Commission meeting it was. It may have been not the most immediate meeting that just passed, if they had one last week, but the earlier one, when they initially raised this, and I know that.
Past Wednesday.
Okay, well, I think they might have talked about it one point earlier, unless I watched, anyway, whatever. But they had raised whether, even if they don't have a vote on site plans, whether staff, you know, could confer with the Planning Commission to get the benefit of Planning Commission's thoughts, even though staff is ultimately responsible for that ministerial review of site plan. And I do think that, you know, there could be some benefit to that process, and especially just public visibility into site plan review after so much public comment takes place during SE approvals. And so I just didn't know if that had made its way to you, or if you had provided sort of any feedback on that request regarding just insight of the Planning Commission into whatever that, like, DRC review looks like for site plans, even if Planning Commission ultimately isn't voting on a site plan.
No, that request had not come to me, and I'm happy to take the question and bring back an answer.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to add, as the GovOps chair, that the full council will see draft of employee reviews before that meeting, a week before that work session, where we're giving employee reviews. So everyone, all seven members of council will have an opportunity to review and revise and before they're delivered and approved. Thanks.
All right. So for the June 16th meeting, I would be joined by the CACT for its annual report, Affordable Living Policy, refer to the Planning Commission, so that's a vote to refer, the spring budget amendment, second reading, the three franchise agreements, and then consent, I mean, second reading on the council salary and benefits. Those are the highlights of that meeting. June 23, we are hopeful that the Employee Review Board appointees are going through the process and that we can have the Employee Review Board do its work for our Employee of the Year selection. If that happens, then on June 23rd, we'll have a reception and recognition of our 2024 Employee of the Year. We'll also be joined by the EDA for its annual report, action on council appointees, compensation for the coming year. And I think those are the items for June 23rd. July 27th work session, we'll have a Virginia Village update and strategic discussion, and we'll discuss the utilities chapter of the comp plan. The 14th.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we make sure that the Public Utilities Commission knows about, or has an invite, or at least alerted through your staff liaison that that'll be discussed in the work session? That'd be great.
Okay. On the 14th, the Broad and Washington easements, that would be the final action on that, and then an initiating resolution for the Utilities Comp Plan Chapter. Delegate Simon is looking to come to the council for the resolutions that he had this year. I think he's, might be coming twice for those Sunday, is that right? Or is it just once?
Once for the majority, and I'm working on one date for the honoring the life of.
Okay. Then August 4th, and maybe this will be the last sort of cycle that we'll discuss, we would have the Affordable Living Policy Comp Plan Amendment, final work session. We'd have the report from the Solid Waste Task Force, and then a real estate tax rate ordinance, and a solid waste fee resolution. And then on the 11th, final action on the Affordable Living Policy, we'll have then first reading potentially on the real estate tax rate ordinance and solid waste fee resolution. We would also, at that August meeting, have the report out on CIP and strategic priorities.
Do people have any vacations or remote participation things to note while we're in the summer months, so we can plan?
Let's check mine. They're on here.
Okay. I'm be gone at the July 28th meeting. TBD whether I'll call in or not.
It looks like.
Oh, I will be as well.
I'll be gone the 14th and the 21st.
I think I heard Debbie was out for the 20, which one, sorry?
It's on there, the 28th.
Okay.
Yeah, July 28th and September 8th. They're both on there. Thank you, Steph.
I can't see the column, but I think I'm on there for June 16th, right? Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, you are on that.
Oh, and I'll be back. So I'm listed as electronic for the 23rd, but I'll actually be back in person for June.
Okay. I think we had that quorum issue with June 9th, so that we've resolved that. Do we have any quorum issues with July based on?
July 28th?
So me and Debbie are gone July 28th? Yep. Okay. Okay. Okay, I think that's it then, unless there's other things to note on the schedule or to be, actually, I did have one thing. I think West Falls had, we also wanted to do a walking tour of West Falls when they're done with, obviously, all the streetscape. I think Mary Beth Abadazian thought early June, and so before all the vacations start, we can maybe pencil that in once we hear back from West Falls. I thought it was helpful to see the theater and Founders 2 today. So thank you for everyone who joined that. Okay, I think that's it. Any business not on the agenda? Committee or regional body reports? People don't want to talk any longer. Council comments? Okay, well, I guess we can finish the meeting. Thanks for adjourned. Good night, all.
Thank you, council. Good night.
Thank you, Steph.